For school and old trucks that come in six. In back there, we had a conveyor belt going upstairs. We run off the can by coming in six. Teach night, but I can remember that's cool. Remember following that. Yeah, number three, what you. Bathroom is got paid on Thursdays, I mean, no, so that was a big number. So I go over there to eat. We had steam clams.
Good pizza.
Oh, that there's not, yeah, it's fact, we have steam clams. For like two dollars and fifty cents.
When you was in?
This was back seventy-two, seventy-one, seventy-two, seventy-three.
They had sunnies back then, yeah, during the.
Yeah, we just had dances, we go with sunnies, and they had it separated. They have a. A bar, then they had a part that was not on, but I mean, it was only separated by like a half wall. But we go over there at a dance, and go over there and get a pizza or something, or a sandwich, or a sandwich.
You want to help Dr. Lane?
Well, I think we might be recording all this stuff while you're.
Well, I'm just offering help. Donnie, so.
Gotta make it big.
Well, this, right?
Yeah. Yeah. Oh, my, go back the other way.
And you are recording, or you were.
Okay, so. We have five minutes, and I don't see the chat, the room, like, okay, down there. So in a couple of seconds, we turn it on and let people in, right?
Are we recording?
Pause on the very top. You have to touch the screen again to open that bar on the top. There's a pause button.
Microphone's on and we're recording?
We have to let everybody in like that tonight?
Yes.
Yeah, as it'll stop right there. I'll keep an eye on.
Well, oh, working stuff.
Are we reading order? Probably sand, look like the Believers. You have one adjustment to the agenda?
Yeah, please.
Could be mine when I said that. All.
Yes, add a second release.
I'm early morning portion, though.
Sorry, guys, we've got Caroline going off, and we're just wondering if it's hours for all those who are on Zoom. Would you say that again, please, Doctor?
Yes, the adjustment is to add a second early release day when we discuss early release days. To add it to our calendar.
Okay. Public comment? Is three minutes? And all I ask is, please be nice. Right? Any public comment? See none? Right? Approve the minutes, Kevin?
Move to approve the minutes of the school board meeting, September tenth, twenty-four, five, four, barring any errors or mishaps.
Second.
Yeah. Get to every minute, get it out, okay? Any discussion? About the minutes? Seeing none, all in favor? Five oh.
What do you want me to do?
Payroll.
Yes, okay. Okay, it was moved to direct the superintendent of schools to authorize payment by the town treasurer to each party listed here, and the sum set against each name contained in school payroll warrant. P R twenty-five dash seven in the amount of one hundred and thirty-three thousand, one hundred and forty-one dollars and fifty-one cents. P R twenty-five dash seventy in the amount of seventy-five thousand, nine hundred and ninety-six dollars and forty-five cents. Main purse. Ah, twenty-five dash four in the amount of two hundred and thirty dollars and thirty-one cents, and main purse twenty-four dash thirty-eight this year, twenty-four in the amount of twenty-two hundred and twelve dollars. And eighty-six cents on September twenty-six, twenty twenty-four, and P R twenty-five dash eight in the amount of one hundred and thirty-five thousand, one hundred and twenty-three dollars and ninety-one cents. P R twenty-five dash eight D in the amount of seventy-two thousand, eight hundred and sixty-two dollars and twenty-four cents. Main purse twenty-five dash five in the amount of eight thousand, one hundred and ninety-eight dollars and forty-four cents, and main purse twenty-four dash six in the amount of two hundred and thirty dollars and thirty-one cents on October tenth, twenty twenty-four. It's not ready for me to go out, like, right, funky.
Okay. Any discussion about what she? Kevin?
You had to take a breath that time.
I did. I stumbled in a second, for a second, because I was like, I don't remember what it was. I lost the line. I almost repeated a line.
We will, we will note that, okay?
It's a red lettered action.
Is there any other discussion?
I still see twenty, this being twenty-four. Have you come to enhance?
We're wrapping it up, yes, yeah, a few strivers.
Any others, Kevin?
No.
Oh. All in favor? Five oh. Payroll, Kevin?
Let me promote this, direct the superintendent of schools to authorize payment by the town treasurer to each party listed here in. The sum set against each name contained in the school payroll warrant. A P twenty-five dash nine in the amount of twenty-five thousand, four hundred and sixty-six dollars, forty-three cents. A P twenty-five dash ten in the amount of. Twenty. Two hundred and twenty-four thousand, seven hundred and eighty-two dollars and twenty-two cents. S A twenty-five four student accounts in the amount of one thousand, five hundred and nineteen dollars and forty-seven cents. A P twenty-four dash fifty-two, F Y twenty-four in the amount of twenty-two thousand, six hundred and eighty-five dollars and thirty-nine cents. And A P twenty-four dash fifty-three, F Y twenty-four in the amount of thirty-two thousand, nine hundred and forty-four dollars and twenty-four cents. On September twenty-six, twenty twenty-four, and A P twenty-five dash eleven in the amount of one hundred and seventy-four thousand, two hundred and sixty-nine dollars and twenty-four cents. S A twenty-five dash five student accounts in the amount of. One thousand, five hundred and ninety-three dollars and forty-one cents. A P twenty-four dash fifty-four, F Y twenty-four in the amount of twelve thousand, seventy-seven dollars and forty-one cents. And A P twenty-four dash fifty-five, F Y twenty-four in the amount of eleven thousand, two hundred and fifty-seven dollars on October tenth. Twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Five oh. No reputation of hires? Don?
Just Jesse Morrison will be our freshman class advisor one year. Year one, step one, four hundred dollars. Heather Gerstler will be our sixth grade math team coach, year one, step three, nine hundred dollars. Estica, I'm not saying that right, Luca Riley?
Yep.
Moved from being.
Just Luca?
Moved from being a ed tech one to an ed tech three for hourly rate change of sixteen dollars and thirty-eight cents to eighteen dollars and seventy-eight cents. And Patty Royce, he is being hired as an ed tech one in pre-K beginning October fifteenth. She will be placed at a step three, sixteen dollars and thirty-eight cents per hour.
Question? Okay, thank you, Don. Junior class representative, somebody would like to make that move, Kevin?
May, I'd like to make a motion to accept Madison Carr as the school board junior class student representative.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Well, Miss Carr.
Ms. T, would you like to make a statement on her behalf?
I'm very excited to have Madison on board. She's a great student. She's involved in a lot of things, so I think this is just. One more thing that she'll do very well. She's very excited to do it. In fact, she did a report for this. Meeting that she didn't have to do because she wanted to get used to how it should be done. I think she'll be a great addition.
Great.
And she's at a ball game tonight?
Yes.
Field hockey, I understand.
Yes.
Would you call that a ball game?
Yeah, I guess it is, isn't it? Yeah, okay. Any discussion? Anymore?
Just that, I know since she's a very young lady and she was a, a great little girl, a great young lady, and will do a good job.
Thank you.
Very excited to welcome somebody new and. Have another representative forward.
Okay, with any, no more discussion, everybody in favor? Five oh. Thank you, guys. A motion to approve the. Two days, please. Kevin?
Move to approve Wednesday, January twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five, and Wednesday, February twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five, as early release days for staff professional development.
Second.
Okay. You gonna get an explanation, okay?
Please. Um, so this year, when we met with the region, which is what we're required to do because our calendar has to line up with the region calendar. And then it's sent to the DOE for final approval by the commissioner. That process has been the same for a long, long time. Um, but in looking, trying to be intentional about, um, learning for staff. Providing them with opportunities to learn new things or be supported with, um, training. Sometimes it's difficult for us to just like put a dart in the calendar and say, this is an early release day. Because that doesn't necessarily mean that's the day we can have a professional or somebody with experience that will share it with us can join us. So that's why we didn't put the whole years, early release days, in the calendar, so that we could leave it a little bit fluid. Knowing that we wanted the days, we wanted to provide the training for our staff, but we didn't necessarily know what days that would be. That said, we now have a couple of things lined up, and we would like to add, um, the January twenty-ninth and the February twenty-sixth, early release days. For training for our staff. And, um, we're taking great advantage of the time that has been. Increased in our calendar this year, our food support, our food staff has gotten, um, some extra training and has some additional training coming up. Our ed techs for special ed have had some extra training, and our regular ed teachers are working on some too. So, um, these two days are all lined up for professional development with your approval.
Okay, I missed because I was writing, I apologize. What about region three? Does this still line up with region three, or is this too off?
It does, it does still line up with regions three, yes, yep.
It would anyway, right? Because it's sort of really.
And because it's half day, right? If it were a full day, we would, um, have to talk with them, but we haven't used our, um, odd days yet. And last year, we didn't use our odd days. Um, but yes, they don't, region doesn't care if we have an early release day. This request is really from you, so that you know that our students are going home and our staff is getting training.
You're not going. Are there any questions? Other than my stupidity one? All in favor? Five oh. Okay, another motion for. Sunday. Don?
Uh, move to approve the Scholastic Book Fair to be open on Sunday, October twentieth, twenty twenty-four, from two to four P M. In the Grand Street School Conference Room.
Second.
Kevin? I will say that I. I am in favor of this because it is family time and it is after church time. So it is a Sunday afternoon. So. Does anybody else have any? Don?
I guess still gonna have a family day. They usually do that family day and book fair together.
I think they're having, like, all of the kids by classroom go into the book fair. Um, Corinne does a little activity with all of them, none of that's changed. And Ms. Mary is not here because she's sick, but I believe that there is still that. This is an addition for some people who weren't available to make that. I think this is a total add-on, because the book fair, as you know, is that's who's best.
From what I understand, is she's asking for this, was at the start of the book fair. For the parents who work late.
Yeah.
And can't make it. The family night, I believe, I read was still going to be there.
Yeah.
So I think, I'm quite sure that's what Jacob brought home when I'm trying to.
No.
I couldn't be wrong. I could be wrong out there into the world, but it very seldom happens.
I think, I think you're right. I think he's right. This is an add-on.
It's just, it's just an add-on for the people who can't make it.
I know what Donnie was saying, is you need to, basically have a night where parents would come and they would go to different activities.
Yeah.
Yes.
You know, maybe spend twenty minutes here, twenty minutes.
So there's a parent engagement night on the. The Thursday that we're at the school board training in Augusta, actually, um. That night, so that might be what you're talking about.
It is, yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Kevin?
I'm all in favor.
Okay, five oh.
With some reservations, but I. It's after church time, it's after Sunday school.
It's more family time. So I don't see that as a bad thing. Thank you, guys. Oh, boy, poor discussion of all conference.
Yes. Not me?
Well, it's, it's, it's a delegate, you get, you get.
But what do you want me, but like, this is a very big, like, do you want to just discuss what they're doing?
Well.
What the, what the?
No, actually. What you're gonna be doing, will you know? Didn't you do this last year?
Two years ago, when I was in. So I'm knowing, and then I'll give you a rundown when we're all.
No.
What?
Okay, there, uh, certainly. What do they call it, Kevin?
Resolution?
Resolutions, thank you. And this is why, you know, I'm doing what I'm doing. There are certain resolutions that the board has to agree to on how, how you're going to vote.
Yes.
So that's what we have to do tonight.
Okay. So, so you, so I don't have to, this doesn't have to be like.
You understand.
My led thing is what I'm, what I'm making.
I'm gonna give you the lead to put in that pencil.
Right, excellent, thank you so much. That was the clear up. I'm like, it's not my turn to be in the spotlight and laugh, or so.
But you're going to.
You tell them the topics, and then they decide how we want to ask you to vote or to represent them as we can, that job. Yes, I remember that from the first time.
Okay.
For the direction. So topic number one. Okay, so topic number one. This is the, uh, I think just deletion. Yes, okay, so they review the security liability insurance protection. This is all what's incorporated now within section C, all redundant information. Uh, for deletion, that is the only thing on section B that is being. On the section C, proposed revisions to existing resolutions. We've got, uh, renumber, remove from MSBA resolutions, section four, special revolution, uh, resolutions, and move to MSBA resolution, section two. Policy statements, and also remove the last sentence. So we're moving from section four to section two, and we're also removing the last sentence, which is, this proposal should be in form of. A resolve voted on the second session of the one hundred and twenty-ninth legislature, probably for a timing. Okay. Anyway, proposed amendment. Good to go?
Good.
Moving on. Uh, to a, capital A, to small j, school safety, so, um. Recognizing the threat of violence exists, blah, blah, blah. They are proposing to amend it, but I don't have a highlight. Or a cross-out.
Renumber it.
Oh, okay, yeah, sorry. Um, so accepting the new policy deletes this, this is the important part. Since the board of public schools responsibility to keep children and staff safe, the main school board association advocates the following comprehensive approach. Ongoing risk assessments, not only for active shooter attacks, but also disruptors that could put students or staff at risk. Increased focus on social and emotional support, training on early warning signs. Uh, around student perpetrators of violence programs like Say Something, which encourage students to go to an adult with their concerns about a potentially violent peer. Increased funding in the revolving school renovation fund that includes school safety projects as priorities, and support for state and federal funding for school resource officers where appropriate. We also support tasking the department's facilities office to advise, collect, and disseminate best practices on keeping children safe. That's the old. The new is just updated for modern language and gets rid of a lot of. Um, it adds some stuff, so recognizing that the threat of violence exists. The main school board, um, it's, it basically takes out to keep children and staff safe. And recognizing that the threat of violence exists, it's a different terminology, a little bit more. You know. It's also, you can, yeah, it's also directing the department to elect, um, information in, in by school systems. Right, exactly. So this is, that's kind of the change. In this, it urges local school boards to be increasingly vigilant and seeking to promote a safe school culture, so the addition of. The school board piece into the policy itself. Um. To support a public school's responsibility to keep students safe and staff safe, the MSBA advocates following comprehensive approach, risk assessment, same as the other. Um, not only for active shooter attacks, but other disruptors, same as the other, that could put anyone at risk. Um. Increased focus on social and emotional support, same, early warning signs, all of that, Say Something is all, all still in there, all of the important. Points that where we're gonna approach it. Um. The reason I'm taking so long on this is because it's so important. Just, no way. Um, so, encourages students to go to an adult with their concerns about potentially violent peer. Close connections with the main department of education, school safety center, for resources and recommendations. Increased funding in the revolving school renovation fund that includes school safety projects as priorities, which is the same. Um. Support for state and federal funding for school resource officers where appropriate. Um, the use of core values to implement local code of conduct. And safety training as appropriate. Also, tasking the department of school safety center to collect, advise, and disseminate best practice on keeping students safe, which is. Like this. So that's the amendment. Um, it's a lot more comprehensive, I think, like, and more. It's proactive and specific.
Yep.
Um. So. Moving on to capital A, two dot lowercase K, gun free schools. Um, this is staying the same, except for in addition on the end, so the main school board association supports current state ban on guns, loaded or unloaded on school property. That all stays the same. Propose any legislative attempts to amend that prohibition. The ban is both symbolic and practical. It affirms ours and the nation's belief that schools should be safe, even if it's not. Invite intended or unintended tragedy by allowing loaded guns on school grounds. Suggestions that schools can somehow monitor whether guns in cars are safely locked and unloaded are unworkable. The addition is this. Furthermore, MSBA supports evidence-based public health interventions to reduce gun violence in schools and community. That's the. Proposed amendment to that one. To capital.
Question.
Oh, yeah.
Um, a few years back, we had somebody that had a gun in their vehicle. It's a federal offense. And. I'm not sure where it ever went. Hopefully it didn't go anywhere. Um. If it's locked in a vehicle and it's. Not loaded or anything. I just don't want to see anyone get a federal charge against them. At least for us, anyway.
Those laws are easy not to bring a gun to school. Like, super easy not to bring an unloaded gun in here.
Well, I mean, those laws are already on the books anyway, and they have been for a number of years now.
That's, that's just something that's real, that bothered me when that happened, that, uh. It could be. Your, your brother put it in the car, he didn't even know it was there, you know?
Right.
But I think this was somebody that went up to the lake, or number, right?
Yep.
Um, and he was looking at federal charges.
He was gonna go hunt them, of course.
Yeah, he knew it was in there.
Well, actually, yeah, he, yeah.
But, but unfortunately, that's really not ours to decide, because like I said, those laws have been on the books.
So we have to.
We, yeah, and I, I think, considering the, um, environment that we're all living in. I would be surprised if most people didn't know that you're not supposed to have a weapon of any sort on the property.
I wanted you to be sort of aware of that.
Yeah.
You know, because I know.
That's been a thing since I was in, since Columbine happened when I was in high school, I was like a freshman in high school. And that's been a thing since I was in high school, and I graduated twenty-two years ago.
Yeah.
I think this language, some of this language is. The more things change, the more they stay the same, as they say. Some of these, um, highlights are really, I think, in, in response to the, the nature of everything happening and. And actually trying to give us even more support. Some of these laws will put into play other resources for us.
Isn't it a privilege to drive to school?
Is it a privilege to drive to school?
Or you just have to be a certain, you have to. Sign something and say, you know, they do whatever.
No.
I don't believe so, not in, not. Beth is shaking her head, no.
No.
In other school systems where I just came forth from, yes, you have to actually sign a form to have your vehicle on the property. But we, it was a more rural situation than here with your neighborhoods, so there, nothing.
No, the only time we've ever had students sign off on certain forms as far as driving. Is if they needed to go, for example, to region.
Mm-hmm.
Um, they're usually a region student, and they go down on the opposite day because they had to finish a project, or. Because they're driving to a clinical setting, but, and they need to take their vehicle. Then we have all of that signed off on by both schools and the parents, right? Um, but no, we've never, we've never had them sign off on anything as long as they have a valid driver's license, we.
Yeah.
I can, I can see Kevin's point, though. Would it, would it be, uh, would it be unreasonable to? Before the start of the hunting season, uh, that we know we tie.
Remind everyone?
Remind students, we said, no, we don't have a gun in the car, even if the car is law. I can't bring them to school.
That shouldn't be said, but it's already done, so.
Well, yeah, bird moves, but, uh, I just think. Maybe we're a little bit behind them. I hate seeing, I hate seeing, by getting in trouble. They didn't. No, I didn't know.
There's no harm in reminding folks. And moving on? Moving on, so, uh, two, capital A, three, lowercase E. Um, state assessment is a, a proposed amended this year. Um, it's. Quite different than what's, they're like two totally different deals, so.
I don't think that you have to read up.
I don't have to read through them, correct? Okay, everybody's like gone over them, so.
Right.
Exactly.
Excepting one deletes the other, one is standardized assessments, the other is, uh, business employment of students.
Mm-hmm.
Gone. Um, and also, uh, standardized testing benchmarks, gone. Um. Due to, two A, four E, local board responsibility has been amended, um. To remove the local control. Piece of the old policies. Um, and to remove local board responsibility language and replace it with the local board responsibility language up here, which basically consolidates. The major points of the two.
Recognizing that some of what she's talking about are. Um, language from nineteen sixty-three, nineteen eighty-two.
Exactly. We have not updated these, like, local control was last reviewed in eighty-two. Uh, local board responsibility is from, yeah, eighty-two, and twenty thirteen was preserving, preserving local school boards. It's also wrapped up into that one. Consolidated policy.
I did have a quick question on that one. It says, the one they want to put in, says school boards have direct involvement. Direct involvement in developing school policies, budget, and curriculum.
And you do by, um, appointments and participation in committee work, because each of these things on this list are all managed or discussed at committees. Yeah. That still remains at the policy level, because that's what we're talking about, is policies through to those things.
Okay. So, two A, four M is legislative mandates. Um. Proposed amended this year, obviously, and it would get rid of the previous, the two other ones, legislative mandates, um. Which was amended in twenty twenty-two, but not before nineteen ninety-nine, before then. And the funding of mandatory programs, and just kind of consolidates the two and updates the language. Um, two A, two A seven, lowercase A, social services, sports.
We go back to the law. Um. Because it talks about unfunded mandates, and the school board association hasn't selected that has to do that, so they just. We're not saying that it's gonna change the law, right? It's, it's just gonna be, because they're the ones that owe appropriations. So. If they give us a mandate and they don't fund it. We have no recourse, right?
Right. Right, you know, just like now.
Or asking them to.
Right.
We're asking them to do it, but that doesn't mean it's gonna happen.
Right, that's right, exactly, yeah.
Okay.
Noteworthy point for sure. Okay. Social service supports uh two A seven A. Um proposed amended this year will. Basically replace, yeah, the previous almost social service link, which is um. Local boards are encouraged to examine the role of their schools in meeting the needs of students, and it basically just fleshed it out a lot better to address poverty, students, security, social needs, like just kind of. Build it spelled it out. Yes, exactly. In a much more like. Broadway.
As you notice, that bill, um that hadn't been updated since um nineteen ninety-nine.
Yep.
That should make us feel a little bit better because in the policy work we've been doing, we've been saying how it's been so old, but look, here's a. A much larger document in a much larger um arena and.
And it's that old too. White age, of more age than a lot of our policies when we were updating. At least we're in the two thousands.
That's right.
So two B one E is multilingual learners. This is also something that hasn't been amended since nineteen ninety-nine. Um it is replacing the previous bilingual education for obvious reasons. It's fleshing it out. It's multilingual instead of bilingual. It's much more inclusive um. In doing so, students will feel like their um native language. Uh and cultural background is valuable, reinforcing a sense of belonging and pride. That is something added. That I. Really agree with. And I think, like, I really love. The rewrite of this particular policy. I think it's. Quite nice and. Reads very um inclusively. So. Anybody? Question? What? I can take discuss too. I'm not just here.
No, no, it's just the way you go. Or does anybody? I do.
Moving. Moving. Okay. Two B four C equitable educational opportunities is an amendment um proposed this year. They want to just get rid of equal but not identical. After committed to providing equal but not identical, we're gonna replace it with equitable. Um and we're gonna take up the last sentence by involving parents and other citizens in this process when appropriate. Local boards can use test results in positive and constructive ways. It just sort of. The equitable kind of. Read us it anyway. Two B four E equity in education. The whole. Policy is an amendment, so equity in education is replacing gender equity and. Equity in education four dot four dot two zero um and sort of. Molding them together. Gender equity is now being. Both the policy is much more, um all students regardless of race, color, sexual orientation, gender identity, or expression. So that is being moved into because it doesn't deserve, it not doesn't deserve its own type of policy, but it's not separate. It's all inclusive. So that needs to be. Bunched together. That's what they're doing. Um essential programs and services, which is three A, one. Is. Two paragraphs long and. It's replacing essential programs and services. Entirely from the last. Revision, which was done in two thousand and eight. So it's. More than time to update the essential programs and services because as we know, they have, they are not the same as they were in two thousand and eight. Uh.
That's a really important one for us.
It is for everybody.
Especially people in rural areas.
Yes.
They're doing listening sessions um right now around the state, um both at the DOE level, the commissioners level. I can't imagine there won't be some robust conversation um with the delegates as that topic comes up.
Yeah. Oh, it's also, I forgot, it's also replacing the tiny alternatives to property tax blur that says uh mains, which is. Three B, three A, which says main school board association strongly advocates that the legislature act create alternatives to the property tax to adequately fund education, which is. Part of what she's talking about with like the reassessment of. Rural needs particularly essential. Three B, three B tuition tax credits and vouchers. Uh is replacing two B five E, which is vouchers and education savings accounts um. Federal funds vouchers, tuition tax credits. So um. It's replacing that and the last time we amended that was in two thousand and fifteen. So it's basically just terminology that's changing um between. Like you're adding tax credits to the vouchers and you're changing the wording of the wording of the policy, blah, blah, blah. Also replacing tuition tax credits and vouchers uh three B, three B that existed prior, which hasn't been amended since ninety-eight. Three B, three H, federal special education program funding uh is brand newly written and is replacing uh three B, three H as it exists now. Uh and four dot one nine, which is individuals with disabilities education act, um which. Basically it just, um there's an addition of COVID. Mention. Um. And there's uh an addition of, or I'm sorry, it takes the IDEA and lumps it into that one policy.
I'm anticipating that will be robust as well. There's a lot in that paragraph.
For sure, definitely. Um. So new resolutions. We're coming into the modern age. Resolution D. New or new resolutions, which is D, uh artificial intelligence in schools, which is pretty self-explanatory. Uh purpose should be to support all students and achieve their educational goals. Uh all students' use of AI should adhere to existing policies, and we're talking like plagiarism and. All of that jazz and. Yes, but the time has come now with AI being all over the place, but I think it's a good, really good idea to having that resolution. Uh AI is not a substitute for schoolwork that requires original thought. That is very. Spelled out in the rationale that use of AI has become commonplace. Um in other applications of daily life, students and staff of our public schools, they need to know the importance of and selective purpose of AI. For the positive informed use of this tool, obviously, it's gonna continue to be in their lives. Um school funding resolution was submitted by Orono, RSC twenty-six uh. The legislature and governor need to not only fund fifty-five percent of EPS, but ensure that EPS increases in pace with inflation um. The real dollar funding lost in recent years when EPS has fallen badly behind in inflation. And the rationale of that is below. I think you guys have. Probably read through it. Um. Funding fifty-five percent of EPS means a little if EPS does not keep up with inflation. Obviously, it's not that fifty-five percent means nothing. That's what numbers mean. So. Anybody want me to be an advocate professor in? Policy? No?
Thank you. That was a lot. Go for it.
Yeah. Sounds quite boring. Been done five minutes.
Maybe a lot. Some things require a little bit longer conversation.
Thank you, Julie.
You're welcome. My pleasure.
You're important now.
Um the senior class is currently selling pizza kits and this is coming ten, I'm on October twentieth. Uh the unified performing arts is currently working on the Newsies Fall Musical. Which is going to perform by November twenty-second to the twenty-four in the Walker Auditorium. Uh we have fall fun night this Thursday, which consists of both the high school and middle school on the football field with multiple activities. Um for this, all this week, we've had spirit week. Uh the junior class is currently fundraising Cookie Dough until October eleventh. Uh the varsity field hockey team currently stands at. Three dash four as of October second. And. The homecoming field hockey game is today. And the homecoming dance is scheduled for October twelfth from seven PM to ten PM. And Ms. Lo took her students on a rock climbing adventure to the University of Maine on the head of Marneville line.
Thank you.
I have a question. Did you participate in the little white lie?
No, that Regent.
Oh, if you did, what what is that then?
Um. It was saying. I don't know.
I have a loss for words.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
So you want to explain what you're, what you're talking about? Or what she's talking about?
White lie?
Yeah.
Oh, so on Monday, that, today we had, it was like dressed as a Disney character day. But on Monday, they had white lie. You wear like a white T-shirt. And it's like a lie about yourself. So like one of the girls in my class, she like, she loves like country music and she was like, she wrote, I don't love country music.
Okay.
So it's like a little lie about yourself. I don't like something to.
I saw one with my kids.
It's like my daughter and me, you forget until the night before and don't have a white shirt. So you wear a black shirt, which Laura let it and taped this paper on the front that said, uh. This is, I'm wearing a white shirt.
We had a lot of clever ones, yeah.
Yeah? I hope it was a good time.
It was.
It sounds like, yeah.
I am very much in favor of the junior class fundraising with Cookie Dough. I did like that. Cost me a little bit of money, but I'm.
Yes. Any more questions or? Dobry? Seeing done. Ms. Casey?
Um here today, that white comic fan expense is fifteen point nine six percent. And that was. Aggressive. Uh-huh. F five twenty-four audit is well underway. They're coming October fifteenth and sixteenth. Let me gather my necessary documents. I have three binders so far and there's. Five and twenty-two, that's all. And then I attended my first ASVOL meeting, which was created since summer twenty-sixth. It was a very good meeting. Uh we had discussion topics, including presentation of the map, which is regarding um EPS and gathering all the data and what they're looking for. Um. We have Representative Jack Duchesne from appropriation committee. He basically explained the process of what happens in appropriation committee and. He put a little ad lib pieces on what he's in favor and what he's not in favor of. Um we had Jim Chase from the Department of State, who discussed AI, which is something we gotta talk about. And purpose of these meetings are for me to basically kind of other business managers and to learn. And that's what I want anyone to do. That's it.
Good question.
Was there any? Did they let anything out about EPS? Are they in favor of changing funding?
They basically just in the gathering data stage, same stage. They're not in favor of gathering, but they didn't try to get as much data and much response as possible. Because they do know it needs to have some kind of change. They just don't know what to change yet. So that was, we got probably an hour presentation from every and then just after they're gathering data as much as they possibly can.
In the fifteen point nine steps at this time, after the first board, the first board just ended, right? Uh are we on? Where we should be or is it a little low, a little high?
Um I think you're at where you should be because when I did the data last month, you were right on target. So we're still on target. Even with the subscriber invoices, which you mentioned, um that's where it's gonna happen because we're in October and things just. That's helping work.
Fortunately, I think the report you might have been printing that I. Submitted was from last year.
Was from what?
From last year. I went. So people summarize yourself. It was a nice.
Going off script.
We got a lot, doesn't it? Yeah, I went to print it out and uh what I sent to camera and it came out in October twenty-three, so I'm thinking she got the wrong report.
Too funny.
Um but I can update you on a few things for you. It's October. Finally, um wrapping up and have wrapped up all of the um spending for the last round of the S R money. Um that's been a. That's been a great thing to accomplish and have everything accounted for and greatly appreciate the help of Rhonda and all of that. Um. So I think we, we, the bridge at Toop Pond is one of the last things that's under construction currently. Um. The intercom system for Sterns, all of the parts and pieces are here on site now, so we can begin installing that over the winter months. Uh we have a hundred and thirty brand new beautiful folding chairs for our gym and other meeting spaces and our. New cafeteria tables for Sterns have arrived and the ones that granted are sitting in, for granted, are sitting in Bangor currently, waiting to be delivered. And the docks um for Toop Pond, the docks for up there are sitting out back. So. We, I, I will say, I did not want to return a nickel of that money. Who would ask? Free money. Um so I feel pretty good that we were able to accomplish uh all of those. All of those expenditures and tasks within the date allotted and uh. I feel good about that. Um. Part of. Some of what we were planning for this coming year, um our last summer's expenditure was was buying on lab furniture for both science rooms. Chemistry and biology rooms. So we've begun. The demo of that. None of the equipment came during the summer, of course, when we could do any of the work. So it all came a couple of weeks ago. So it literally fills one entire bay of the auto shop. Um. So we are currently under construction in the biology room while Ms. Hayes is out on maternity leave. And we'll be working on that, getting that built and a lot of work to do in there before we start on the chemistry room. Um. And aside from that, all the busy time for us with outdoor activities and athletic complex maintenance and games to prepare for and lining and watering and mowing and. All of the fall sports activities that we. Do and ramping up to getting ready for the winter season, which is just, it's busier indoors. So. It's been a busy month, I will say. There's, there's never much of a break. If anybody has any questions?
I, I have one, Louis.
Yeah.
Yeah. I guess there was a a gentleman who lost a necklace. Out on the field. Was that ever found? It was actually unearthed.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Yeah, we, um, they've been. Looking for that.
That's not.
Has been looking for that. They've been up there with a metal detector.
Yeah, you said, I feel bad.
It may turn up.
Yeah.
I lost one.
I lost one of my own. My dad's fucking up there somewhere. I haven't heard on a keychain. It's probably at school somewhere.
I, I have a question. I think it's for one, but more than one. Is S R money, is it coming back on a timely man? I know we were struggling with getting the money back. How, have we been getting it to the timely man now?
Yeah, we've been getting it very quickly now because it did come to an end as far as obligation by September thirtieth. Um. I'm into. On my July now. July, except for my mommy ordering. And that's big, Jerry. Basically, what mommy didn't have, Jerry. Yeah, we're back on that.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. Wonderful blessing.
Yeah.
Just a quick comment on that. I know Donnie and I are both on building in grounds. I just wanted to say how organized. Louie is, when he comes to those meetings, he has pictures, he knows prices, and you can tell what he did. And he did a lot, and so did his crew this summer. They did a lot in Granite. They replaced sections of boilers. Uh they just, it's remarkable how organized. And how forward-looking. The building in grounds are, you know. Just a comment. For you.
Yeah.
And then we have Mia's, who is all organized as well.
With a very short report.
Yes. Pictures out of that. There's a lot happening.
Awesome.
Uh so our food service team served five thousand eight hundred and thirty-three breakfasts and five thousand eight hundred and seventy-two lunches in the month of September. Which is pretty close to on par with last September. Um. Louie mentioned our new tables are at firms. We're waiting for the ones that Brandon, I really appreciate your help um facilitating that order. Uh they look amazing, by the way. They really uh add something new. Um. We have our new nutrition software and digital menu software up and running well. Um those are working well for us. Uh you can see our menus online now, which is fantastic. Still working on fully integrating it with the app. But when you uh go to the school website, um the traditional way, um you can very, very easily um get to the menus from that.
Is it gonna be on your app eventually?
It will.
Okay, that's over and check in.
We're, we're working on it. Working on the app portion.
The software is just not exactly lining up with the app, so, yeah.
It's coming.
Yeah, it's coming.
It's in the works. Um. Same with our ordering inventory. So it's just. Lots of new programming to kind of organize and sync up. Um but we're heading in a good direction with it. Um even more relevant, um moving into the future, just pretty fantastic. Uh and we've made the final staff selections for the HMI Fall Summit. Um Donna Siemens and Jessica Freeman will be joining myself. On a journey to Las Vegas. Um we leave the twentieth, return on the twenty-fourth. Um. Very exciting opportunity, probably. Very exciting opportunity, probably, I would say, once in a career opportunity trip, especially. With the ability to bring additional staff members and not just administration, so it's a very exciting time for our program. Any questions about social services?
So Mia has really sought out, um, in a very intentional way. Growing the skill set of her staff, and they spent time in Augusta, right, was it Augusta, the five day training in the summer?
Oh, that was in Farmington.
Farmington, they spent time in Farmington, and then she's had trainings that she's done right here. Uh, she's got a, a day, um, all pre-approved for in February, like she's being very proactive and intentional. To grow the skill set, which hopefully will make them feel comfortable, valued, and stay with us, so awesome.
And I want to thank you all for your kind words for last meeting, I did get, uh, to, to see the video, and I'm so glad it was not here.
And I told her we do have to have pictures from Vegas, but I really don't want to see anything inappropriate.
We give her like, uh, last time I was in Vegas, I had quarters, uh, have they gone out by now?
Yeah, something like that, it'll be awesome.
Thank you.
You won't say anything on the agenda?
I was gonna say, um, you have a lot, Jane? You're just out of order, so Jan, our special ed.
I can't, I can't, you can't blame me because my thing's all apart.
Oh, okay, and Jan, our special ed director, so I'm not sure that you've actually been here in person. So for those of you who haven't met Jan, um, personally in person, uh, this is Jan, she has been working with us since, um, July first.
What did you say?
I think you thought it was public comment, because she looked at me and said, do you have public comments?
But I thank you for letting Mr. Sullivan back in. Running the meeting and trying to run that board is just.
So Jan did start with us in, in July, and this is a joint effort with East Millinocket and Medway, she's a special ed director for all three systems. Um, when we interviewed her, it was a collaboration with people from the various systems. And, uh, she is our employee here at Millinocket, and we have MOUs, just, I know you already know this, but to remind you. We have an MOU with Medway and with East Millinocket, um, she is working very hard because this is a new venture. To, to do things this way, um, so we do appreciate her being here and. Glad that you can be here in person this time, because I, I just want to say that, that's part of the reason why you haven't seen her, because she works for three. Systems, so we have her in person today.
And face together.
Yeah.
Turning to like flip flop, uh, because Medways is going on right now, so I was at theirs before, and so some of them that follow the thing. Then sometimes, when they do, we've been going back and forth and alternating stuff. And so the board reports will look the same each time though, um, so you'll know what the child come in everything is, and I won't go through. All of those numbers, um, but it was for highlights, it was great to start doing here, so. I've done two trainings already with the ed techs, and so we have gone over all of their job descriptions, we move over their contracts. And the last time Beth actually, um, joined us, she sat in on the whole last session, um, that we went over their evaluation tool. And what we're looking for, and it was great because with Beth being there, we could kind of piggyback off what we're looking, um, within the staff. And then I also, um, started some work with them, and it was, um, social, emotional, behavioral development. So they worked on like how to prompt students, supervise students, um, reinforcing some of those skills to get. Um, the awareness and that, um, and I'm hoping that within that context, it's kind of, you know, if. They may be in a classroom with a teacher, you know, like you said, I got the assist for the. The, you know, letting somebody in, and the ed techs are getting the assist within the classroom for classroom management strategies, um, that's coming in. We also went through certification and pathways, so I do a lot, um, within the state for the Grow Your Own program, so we talked about. How they could become a one to a two to a three, um, and then they did teacher certification. And they have already started reaching out to me saying, oh, what were some of those things that you had stated, so hoping, you know, as we have. Some openings in any positions that we would be able to fill those with ed techs that currently have an ed tech that's doing a student teaching. Um, from the story, he knew me before any of you did, because at our last class, he said, I'm the special ed director because I taught. Um, the special ed class that he was in, so he took it and then found out I had the position here, so he's doing student teaching, so it was. A neat moment, um, that Roger gets to come in under. Um, so as I stated, we do have, um, I said upcoming with, um, teacher training for Acuity. Um, Acuity is a platform that all of our five oh four plans, their evaluations, um, any of their documents. Um, for I, IPs, their minutes, um, everything is all digital, so it's twenty-four seven access, and it's very locked down for FERPA. So only students that we assigned to each teacher, um, are able to be viewed by that teacher. So, um, a lot of work in getting that, kudos to Michelle, she has done a lot of behind the scenes. And the training actually just went up this week, so it's set upcoming, but it actually just happened, they sent it out. Over the weekend, maybe, um, for everybody, and then very exciting. Is that, um, Shelley had sent out an invitation, so our, uh, um, October twenty-fifth workshop. Is actually a workshop for all three districts, so East Millinocket, Medway, um, and ourselves, um, are going to be having the same workshop. And I know that one school district for sure has accepted the invitation, but Shelley sent it out. And so here we will be hosting, and it's a workshop that I've provided, um, for different staff, um, in. Like, for all the teams, um, for that, so it's just talking about the science of behavior and the acting outside of. Certain things that it looks like as students are, um, having problems regulating and some of that challenging behavior, what you should do, shouldn't do. Within those moments to de-escalate the behavior and help, um, students co-regulate. So that will be a joint effort, so I'm really excited about that, because that will be our first group. Um, that will come together and try to provide some training, because everybody sometimes feels like they're on an island. Um, there's only one high school resource teacher here, one middle school, but by joining the districts together, they can talk to another functional life skills teacher. Or another teacher that's behavior and, and kind of be able to build those community of practices and networking.
Good question about Acuity, uh, so a classroom teacher can go on the computer, look at, look at the student's IP. Minutes from the IP. That's fantastic.
Yes, and then every five oh four plan, everything is all artifacts in there, so.
Been a lot of work to get that all in.
It's, it is getting, yes. We uploaded it, and then now that they're in the system, then we will write everything, so, um, I do five oh four plans. So all of the five oh four plans, I type everything right into it, and then it's all live, and then as soon as it's processed, everything is. Right in there, so it will be a time saver for the teachers, like the special ed teachers. Because once they type it in this time, you can clone it and then change things, so it'll be a lot more efficient for our office. And when I'm reviewing paperwork, I can do it at night, it doesn't really matter, it submits everything and.
So they can just go into amendments and they'll be carried right through and much.
Exactly. Yeah, it's a lot, like I said, it's a lot of work for the up part of it, but then it's very efficient, so it will save a lot of time once we.
Um, on behalf of Ms. Mary, who is, um, out sick, um, she did submit a report on a couple of things. Um, there is the family engagement night, October twenty-fourth, um, from four to five o'clock, so that had been mentioned earlier today. Um, through the year, testing window is September sixteenth to October twenty-fifth. Um, Brian had written an article in the newspaper, because, um, he had written an article, and I said, can you please put in something about some? So Brian, I want to say publicly, thank you for putting that in, and if anybody knows of anybody, we still are looking for subs. Um, so this really has hurt us, it has hurt on all levels, right from custodial to office staff to Mia's program. Um, and, and at Granite Street and Sterns, so, um. The testing is continuing, but I, I run those two thoughts together because it's difficult to have a testing environment. And a normal environment for kids when we're, um, working around with schedules when we don't have enough people, so that's it.
That's it, thank, thank you. Saying anything on behalf of Mr. Collins? Okay, this PB for Mr. Collins.
Um, an important piece in Mr. Collins' report is that. The Millinocket School Department Emergency Management Plan is being finalized. So we've been performing safety drills at both Granite Street and Sterns, um, and we'll continue doing those, we're doing. Um, evacuation drills as well as our normal fire drills and lockdowns and. Um, so that's all in practice, we have notified, um, the public, the community. So that when they see a whole school of kids going down the street somewhere else or down the. Rat complex road, that they understand that we are practicing, which is what we need to do. Um, hopefully, we'll never have to actually put it into practice, but if we do, then we're all prepared. We know what we're doing and how to do it, and so do our students. So, um, that was an important piece, and the new app has been going well, um. And we'll continue to work on that and link more things to the app, it's.
I get notifications every day, I get a little buzz, and it shows me the administration, the administrative notes, administrative announcements, I get them every morning. Goes, Millinocket School System, what, a little?
Isn't it great?
Love it, yeah, love it.
So I think that's a wonderful tool, eh, tool to improve all of our communication, um, between schools, between the school and the board. Between parents in school and also just the community as a whole. I think it's very important, um, one other quick note from Mr. Collins' report is that. Um, he did touch upon the varsity field hockey. The varsity football, the middle school football, and the middle school field hockey, they're all doing very well, but with. Our varsity football win over Fulton on Friday, we are now number one. So we will be hosting some of the, um, bio themes, hopefully all of them. Um, so please come out and join us, Ruth's boys on, they are having a really good season. So that's from Mr. Collins.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Now for mine.
Wait, wait for me to have a seat, then call you back out.
So one of the things that I want to highlight out of my report is senior night, so we had an all things senior night. Um, on September twenty-third, we had it in the library, Mrs. Buzzell coordinated it. Um, she organized the event, sent out RSVPs to all senior parents, provided supper. Um, we had Nikki Bishon from BAME to come and talk about all things FASPA and scholarships. We had, uh, two representatives, Brittany Riveri and Aubrey Howard from our Gear Up. Um, contacts, and they explained to parents exactly what Gear Up would do to help seniors. Um, we talked about other pathways, for example, internships and going into the workforce rather than into college. Um, we touched a little bit upon the military, although right now we haven't had any students who are interested, but. Again, that is another pathway, um, so we're trying to help students with, um, that. I think it's very important to note that some of our parents who had seniors last year. Were very pleased with the seven hundred and fifty dollar scholarship that our seniors just received, because we're a gear up school. And many of those same students also have had assistance with buying books or buying tools. For if they're in a trade school, so I think all of that is very important to note, it's. Been wonderful for our students being part of Gear Up. The other thing that I would like to highlight is our Veterans Day celebration, so we will get word out fairly soon. About our Veterans Day celebration, it is on a calendar, our school calendar already for November seventh. Um, I believe, but we will have the word out in the paper on our app, on our Facebook page and on our website. It's going to be a little bit different this year, so in looking at it and talking to staff. Um, we've all made the decision that we believe our Veterans Day celebration should be. More student-centered and student-led. So our National Honor Society students in the high school. Are helping to coordinate and organize and put together the program along with their advisor and alum and myself. Um, so we still plan to have the breakfast for the veterans, and we still plan to have our Veterans Day celebration. But it's going to look a little bit different, so you'll, the veterans and you, if you all attend, because I hope that you do and you can. Um, but they will see more, um. More students performing or, um, taking part in the actual ceremony rather than. Other organizations, so we want it to be more student-based, because our students want to say thank you, and we need to give them that voice. So does anyone have any question?
Well, in my opinion, the veterans thing led by the students, I think that's tremendous, because I think that would really honor the veterans. I think they'd much rather hear from the students than.
And where the National Honor Society students, um, have already set up meetings, and we've had meetings with Ms. Mary. From Granite Street, who is also talking to her staff, because it will be District July. So, from the littles to the bigs.
I think that's tremendous.
And if you have any questions about either of those things or anything else in my report, I'd be.
Yeah, just a quick question, and if something might not be of pay grade, uh, there, I know the state of Maine was helping pay tuition. Up until twenty, I think it's twenty-five, for technical education colleges, do you know if there's any possibility, or have you heard any talk with a. That money be extended? It's up to twenty-six now? Okay, good. I hope that continues, I think it's a lot, uh, real opportunity, for a poor state, poor community, poor state, we can get, uh. Get tuition paid, that would be very helpful to our kids.
A lot of our students that do plan to go to college or have or are going to college. Um, many of them have started out at the community college level for the first two years. And then transferred into the university, because they've also made that process easier. So it's credit for credit now, rather than, oh, well, this class is a little different from this science class, so. We'll give you the credit as an elective, but it won't count as your science, so that's kind of gone away now, so all of the main university systems. Except everything from the community colleges, so that really does help.
Thank, thank you, Beth.
You're welcome.
Any other questions with us?
Thank you.
All right. Um, I wanted to say that we have two students, um, joining us, um, pretty soon, um, actually from Guatemala. Uh, Maria and Sarah are part of the Jump the World program, and they will be joining us for eight weeks, they will go back to their communities. Um, just prior to, um, Christmas. Um, Ms. PB and Ms. Mary, um, are working by example, that they have, they are attending, um, this program with the DOE. Called Transformational Leaders Network, um, where they're, they go there to learn and to network, um, in the roles that they. Work in, and then come back here and, uh, use ideas, um, in our system, so kudos to them for being leaders and, um. In gaining new information, um, committee work has started up, buildings and grounds, um, Kevin mentioned that earlier, technology, safety. Communication Committee and Dropout Committee, um, this team approach of ideas helps us to grow and to more fully develop our programs. So all of those things, even if the meeting hasn't happened yet, it's already been scheduled, and most of the invites have gone out, so that work continues. Um, it's already been said a couple of times, but our app is, um, up and going, and yes, it, it does have, um. A little bit more work that needs to be done, we're still fine tuning some of the, uh, the details. Um, one really cool thing, um, that I know Amanda at the high school is very excited about is. Instead of her calling home.
is instead of her calling home every, every day about absentees, she has a a way to put this in the program and I think it's around like nine fifteen or nine twenty, it will call the parent and tell them. And of course, we have to remember that we're not just bugging the parents for attendance. We want the parent to know if we have their child or not. Because what if something happens, right? So it's a, it's as much a safety thing as it is, you know, wagging your finger at them that says, you know, your child's not in school. Really not about that at all. Um so that's a, that's a pretty cool, pretty cool feature of that. Um that's a free tool, just so you know, um and you can download it to to your Android or your um iPhone. Also, uh recently, Miss um Katie Carr went to the Wellness Program in Bangor. Um by attending that, uh she learns, uh she networks and learns a lot of ideas about um wellness opportunities that are being used in school systems around the state. It comes with a five hundred dollars that she's able to bring back to us. Last year, Sandy Berger and and Katie did the uh were the Wellness Ambassadors together. Uh they did hydration stations, they did uh fruit platters, they did walk challenges, um all kinds of things like that. We had a pretty good response and so they are um gonna work on that again this year. They're gonna do it together. Um topics like nutrition, exercise, healthy living, um things like that. And the, the five hundred dollars will go towards like some little token prizes or um you're gonna do a nutrition bingo, I think it's called. And so there'll be some um prizes for that. So we thank both of them for taking that on. Um it's an extra. Um I also wanted to mention that there is a Meet the Candidates Night um on uh Wednesday, October sixteenth, from six to eight in our library. Join us. This is a statement um of news and events. Uh join us for Candidates Night at the Millinocket Memorial Library. This is your chance to hear directly from the candidates running for open seats in the Millinocket Town Council and the Millinocket School Board. Candidates will answer key questions on important community issues. Get involved and learn where your local candidates stand before the upcoming election. Don't miss this important opportunity to engage with your community leaders. Um so just wanted you to hear about that. And um Miss PB already mentioned a little bit about our um safety work that we've been doing. And I just wanted to say just a a couple more things about that. Um we, I I want you to know that we have continued with this love you guys program. Remember, we we started this and the both schools confidently do holds, secures, lockdowns. And now we're down here to working on evacuations. So the thinking with this, like Miss PB said, is that we won't have to use them. Um but the other pieces, the the hold, secures and lockdowns are now as comfortable to students and staff as saying you're having a fire drill, right? Over the uh intercom system, um this, we're going to have a hold, please have a classroom in a hold. Nobody thinks anything of it. Everything just continues, academics still continue. Um and and so it's now familiar, it's comfortable. So now we're on the next level with evacuate and we've started here, like um imagine this as a bullseye. We've kind of started in the middle and we're here. We, we have gone out um as far as the football field and as far as like the gate for the playground over to Granite. So like there's the first layer. We notified parents, we put information out there about it, what it was looking like. It's on the app. All teachers taught to um students in the classroom, both schools. So we did that recently and then we met today to talk about eh, what can we do that looks a little different? What did we miss? Doing some of that table talk conversation about what needs to happen. We're next, we're gonna go out to the next ring. And in the next ring, we're gonna go a little further away from the school. We're going to go to Park. What's the Crandall Park? Uh, I never can remember that. Crandall Park. Um so Granite Street will walk to Crandall Park and Sterns will go to somewhere in the Icare Ministry area. So both date, we will pick a nice day. Parents will be notified. Everybody will know. Like Miss PB said, you'll see kids out on the street. But there's a whole nother layer of things we need to think about, right? We need to think about what do we do with kids next to the road? What, what adults will be doing what type of job? Um whether or not it's looking at traffic control or if it's um making sure that we have all of our attendance, you know. Um so everybody has some jobs. So you see, we've kind of gone from small, like familiar with fire drill, gone out a little bit on our own property. Now we're gonna go a little bit further away. And then, yes, we will go even a little bit further away and we will, um our Granite students will come over to Sterns. Sterns will go over to Granite in a while. We've still got some more details to do. We still got some more roles um to assign and to, for adults to be, get comfortable with. So all of these things are so that we're prepared. They're so that we can mitigate any type of risk, that we don't miss something. So that we can identify issues um by doing these practices. And then as time goes on, evacuations will be just like the old fire drill, like when we were in school. Everybody knew there was a fire drill. You went out, you lined up, teacher took your attendance. And we're just going down through the list, getting everybody comfortable. And when I say get everybody, I mean our kids in the classroom, I mean all of our adults in the building who are keeping kids safe, keeping things organized and our community. The day that our community sees our kiddos walking across the street to go to Granite Street, they're gonna wonder what's going on, right? So we want to get this message out nice and early. Talk about our preparation, talk about our tabletop conversations to make sure they understand that after everything that we're practicing, we're coming back to the table and we're talking about it. We're looking at what, what we're missing, how can we improve it? And obviously, like Miss PB said, we don't want to have to use any of it, but we want it to be like an elastic. It just is spring back and forth without us having to really think about it. If something happens, boom, we just go. So that's what we're working on and we did have a safety meeting today and we will do our next layer. And then we will have another safety meeting and we'll keep going in that process. Any questions, thoughts, concerns over that direction? Okay. Um the last thing I have is um our strategic plan. And if you would take one, this is a um working, a working document. We had a district admin meeting today, as you know, for the last couple of years. We have um regular and routine district admin meetings. If you look at this strategic plan, this is for um five years. This is, the watermark in the back says working documents because it will change. It will change. There will be edits to it. Um I have sent it out to the association to have some input from them. Um the, the cafeteria, um buildings and grounds, everybody needs to be looking at these to think about what it is we need to do next. What direction does Millinocket School want to go in? Um so honestly, for at least a year and a half, we've been talking about these things. I think you should, this is just me, I think you should look at these first couple of years and say, wow, wow. Look at what's happened. Because it may be a small looking thing, but there were multiple steps, multiple meetings, multiple conversations, multiple stakeholders who had input on making all of these practices, procedures um more refined, more understandable, in compliance and get us headed in a direction that is healthy and successful for our staff and our kiddos. I am giving this to you. You may take it. It is not, um it is not finished. So it will look different next time you look at it, whether or not it's because of edits, because of the typo or because of something that we have um figured out it ought to be here. We can also kind of look at it as um a record of what we've done, some of the things that we've accomplished. Um in addition to some of the direction that we want to head. I personally am very proud of the administrative team and all of the work that they've done because their work and the teachers' work is all represented here because they're the ones who are doing these things. I could talk more because there's so much in here, from the things we've talked about tonight with individual programming to um to supporting staff growth, to being role models, to safety plans, to buildings and grounds and making our, beautifying our, our properties, to spending money um efficiently and um frugally to building our system in a, to make it so that it it can move forward and we can do what we want to do at the end, which is celebrate kids. Celebrate their success, the fact that we can feel confident, we've really done what we need to do to send them off to be contributing members of society. Uh we've kept them safe, both in our facility and in our practices. We've educated them by giving them rigorous programs. Um again, I can talk a lot about this. You can, you can tell. Um but I really, I get excited about this because for me, this represents movement. It represents the passion of each of the departments and the dedication of the staff that we have showing up to work every day in the classrooms, making sure lesson plans are done, kids' programs are followed. Okay, I'm done. Thank you for listening. Anybody have any questions?
That was a pretty long.
There's so.
Very nice. I like that. I know it's one of my, just found it through a real quick, I'll do a talk. This is the first time I've seen it. Collaboration, collaboration with East Millinocket with sharing opportunities. I like that. I think that's something we, we should pursue more of.
Okay. Anything else we can raise now? Thank you, Dr. Lee.
You're welcome, very welcome.
Okay. Upcoming meetings, November sixth and January fourteenth. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you, everybody.
You're adjourned.